All right, let me say good evening to everybody. The old clock says it's about time. And so we welcome you to the November meeting of mayor and council. And as we can see, it's getting closer and closer to the holiday season. Closer and closer. Good for us, not good for the turkeys. I called the November meeting to order. And we're going to have invocation. And this gentleman has been here one time, but he's all about, we know him as a staunch Trojan fan. And he's been here before, but he's going to pray for us tonight. And this is Tim Wilson, who is the minister of music for Shammley Memorial Baptist Church. Now, we know where Tim is going to be tomorrow night about this time. But Tim is going to come and do the invocation, after which we will do the pledge of allegiance. Tim?
If I don't follow everything God gives, it'll be good. As we enter Thanksgiving, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you as our city leaders. I came by and saw Mayor Williams a couple of weeks ago and expressed my appreciation to her. But I want to express it to each of you for what y'all do for us here in the city of Fort Valley. Because without y'all, we wouldn't move like we move. But I just want to express my appreciation personally to y'all. Now let us pray. Adel, Father, we thank you that we had this opportunity once again to gather together as a community. We thank you for our community leaders, our mayor and our city council. And for each and every one that works for the city of Fort Valley to serve us as citizens of Fort Valley as we enter this Thanksgiving season. We thank you for a community such as ours that has love for one another. And we thank you for how beautiful our city is as we begin to think about the Christmas holidays and all of that. But we are so thankful to live in a city where the people truly care about one another. We pray that as our council and our mayor deliberate your business today, that you will be with them, give them wisdom and guidance. And we ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I'm going to take the liberty before we go any further to move up, even before we approve the minutes and everything. We're going to move up the appointment or the swearing in of Mr. Alonzo Allen to finish the unexpired term of council member John Ezell, who passed on earlier this year. By way of history, you know, Mr. Allen won that election for the East Ward, but there are two more months in this year that's left in Mr. Ezell's term. So the council agreed to go ahead and appoint him, put him in the chair, and put him to work. So come on, Mr. Allen.
Don't we have to, I move we accept this resolution.
Okay, all right.
I move we accept the resolution.
I second.
All right. Motion, and second, motion by Collins and second by Lane that we accept the resolution appointing Mr. Allen to the unexpired term of Mr. John Ezell. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. And opposes, the same sign? No opposers? All right, come on, Mr. Allen. Ms. McAfee will swear you in, and after that, she'll be swearing at you probably.
You might be swearing at me. You raise the right hand. Say aye, Alonzo Allen.
Aye, Alonzo Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly perform.
That I will well and truly perform.
The duties of city council member.
The duties of city council member.
Of the city of Fort Valley.
Of the city of Fort Valley.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
Without favor or affection.
Without favor or affection.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the scene.
That's big you fellow man.
All right, man, come on in here. Ooh, that's so pretty. It's all tight, so we gotta kind of do the huddle joke.
Yeah, I can move over.
Come on in, like you like.
I can get up here close to Mom.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, now we will have the approval of the minutes. And behind your agenda is the minutes for the October 15th meeting. Now, for everyone except Alonzo, you have seen the minutes already. You saw them on Tuesday night. I'm sure you had a chance to read them. Alonzo was not here on Tuesday night, had some eye surgery. So I hope he can read them tonight. You can see those tonight. I'll entertain a motion about what you prefer for the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes about November 15th.
Okay, motion by Bryant and seconded by Collins to accept the minutes, October 15th. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. All right, and opposes, the same sign? No opposers, the motion carries. Thank you. Have a few announcements. First of all, this last few days, we had an event that we have. It's an annual event for the K-School called Dancing for the Stars. And it was indeed a well-attended affair, and it was a successful affair. Our city administrator is the one that came up. She's, that was her brainchild, how many years ago?
Two or three.
Four, four years ago. And it's been growing ever since. Your mayor got jealous. I actually got jealous when I had problems with my hip. And I said if I ever got it fixed, then I was going to participate. So we did what we said. But I enjoyed that. And it was a success. It was announced that night that we raised some 17,000, maybe a little change. And I don't know if any more has come in since then.
A little bit.
A little bit more. So 17,000 plus is what we raised this time. And our hats are off to Ms. McAfee. And thank her so much for her efforts with that. And all of the participants. I think everybody had a good time. Now, Peach County are heading, will be heading to the second round of the playoff on tomorrow. And you know how we are as Peach County fans. I have a granddaughter who transferred here from Albany. And she said, I didn't, I've never seen a town rally to their players as much as they do. I said, well, it might not be anybody here left in Fort Valley on tomorrow night. So we are hoping for a win again. Our hats off to the guys for their good season and their win on last Friday. And let's go back to, let's go up to Calhoun. And somebody reminded me this evening, it's almost in Tennessee. Let's go up there and bring the win back to the house. That's tomorrow evening at 7:30, I believe. I believe so. Now, this is the last month to warrant our residents about the improper passing parking on Main Street. Remember, we are to park with the flow of the traffic, especially on the left side of Main Street. Let's remember that it's time to start parking right instead of pulling in and going head-on. We have a lot to be thankful for this season. Our streets have been widened. Our infrastructure has been fixed. The town is beautiful. And our public work department and the utility commission and our ladies that usually decorate for us are making it look a lot like Christmas. But we don't want to go through the Thanksgiving season and not be thankful. So we have a lot to give thanks for. The lighting of the, the lighting will be done on Tuesday, November 24th, at 5:30 down at the bandstand. That's when we will officially turn the lights on. So take a break from your Thanksgiving cooking and come on down and be with us Tuesday evening. Thirty minutes at the max that ceremony will be.
And that's when?
That's Tuesday, the 24th, at 5:30 at the bandstand. That's for the blessing of the lights. Fort Valley State is turning theirs on, was it today? I think they are lighting there sometime real soon. I think it may have been this evening. Okay, on December the 3rd is the city's Christmas party. And of course, we invite you to come to that. That will be at the Austin Theater. Council members, we have moved it back to where it needed to be because we were not able to juggle like we wanted to do. So it's going to be on December 3rd. That's the Thursday, the first Thursday in December. Peach County High School Chorus will entertain us that night, and they are good. And then we will have the Class 8 Band that will provide the entertainment. And then we'll have good fun, good food, and good fellowship, December the 3rd. On December the 5th, our annual Christmas parade will be at 5 o'clock PM, starting at Bluebird. Then on Thursday, December the 17th, the council and the department head will have their annual Christmas dinner. And that will be down at the Main Street Grill, the evening hour. That's the day of council meeting, so we're going to get through that meeting.
Quick meeting.
Yeah, quick meeting. And go on down to the Main Street Grill and enjoy each other. On Wednesday, December the 23rd, is our employee brunch, 10 o'clock in the morning. And so that means that a few days, you may see your mayor out of office because she's going to catch some fish. We're going to have fish and cheese grits for that morning. We started that last year, and it was a good event.
Ten.
Wednesday, December the 23rd, at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Did I leave out any other announcements? Okay, I did good then, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Give me an A. All right. Do we have, yeah, we have some special recognition that we have to do at this time. And that is the awarding of the plaque and the check for the employee or employees of the month. The first one is going to be the one that the management and staff at Public Works recommended to us. And they wanted to nominate, this is from last time?
Well, you had a couple from last time.
Okay, and they are not here tonight, are they? No. Okay, this is from, this is from the last time where we didn't give it to them. Tell those guys, Larry, I'm going to get their check and go eat if they don't come on and get it. All right, the next, the next nomination is from the Public Safety Department. And that is firefighter Yeshica Jones. This says that firefighter Jones completed the fire academy last month and was selected as the best recruit in her academy class. This was a hugely prestigious honor. And that she was completing, she was competing against recruits from all over the state. Congratulations. Firefighter Jones started working for the city about two years ago. And after two short months, she has made quite an impression. Her latest accomplishment only serves to bolster the fact that she was also awarded the Fire Rookie Award at our annual city awards banquet this past summer. Firefighter Jones embodies what it means to be a leader, a team player, and a role model. Her performance demonstrates our Fort Valley Public Safety core values. Firefighter Jones's extraordinary efforts and accomplishments during this period reflect great credit upon herself, the Fort Valley Public Safety Department, and the city of Fort Valley. Come and get your award. And of course, we're going to give you the plaque first. And let him take a look at it.
I want to make sure it's the right name.
It's the right name. All right, and we have a check for you.
Well, thank you.
Enjoy. Thank you so much, congratulations. Okay, the next person, he thought that everybody knows. It's on the Public Works Committee report, and that is of Ms. Jackie Smith. Now Jackie, I didn't even bring that down here to read. Because Jackie, since she has been working out at Public Works, she has collected more by far than we have in the, I don't know how many years. I won't tell you the name that I gave her, the nickname that I gave her. Her husband might have shoot me. But Jackie stays on top of it, and of course, she's a good worker. The guys respect her, guys and girls respect her out there. And Larry respects her too. And of course, your mayor does too.
And the finances.
And the finances, and thank you so much for what you do. All right, and Jackie Smith, the employee of the month. Jackie has a visitor with her. So usually, you know, they, the guys take the ladies out. I would make her take me out this time. In Seattle, so we give you a check for dinner. All right, thank you. You want to, you want to introduce your husband?
This is my husband. This is Donald Smith. He's lived in the city of Fort Valley since he was a young child.
Good to have you. Oh, thank you, brother, okay. Thank you so much. Oh, Yeshica. Where she got the fire family? That's the family. These are your family. You want to introduce your family to us?
Sure. These are my brothers.
These are my brothers, all right.
This is Al. This is Al, this is Uncle Oates. This is Brother Larry, Brother Clunzer. And I got my Captain Woodruff over here.
All right.
My main man right here.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the camaraderie that you show your fellow firefighter. Thank you so much. All right, do we have anyone out there to address the mayor and council this evening? Nobody, all right? All right, then we'll go on with the new business. And one new business item we've already taken care of, and that is the appointment of Mr. Allen to the East Ward. Behind tab number two is a list of alcohol licenses that Calvin has submitted to us, or a license that Calvin has submitted to us at 1103 Edward Street. And we talked about this on Tuesday night. I hope I'm saying this right. John Chung has requested a beer and wine package-only license for Fort Valley, for the Valley Stop and Shop located at 1103 Edward Street. I'll entertain a motion about what you want to do for the resolution. All agencies have signed off on it.
Mayor, I so move that we accept the resolution as written.
Okay, motion by Jimmy Barnes, seconded by Lane, that we approve the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
And opposes, the same sign? No opposers, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, now behind tab number three is the list of alcohol licenses for 2016. There was one that was removed from the list since Tuesday night, and the others are there for your consideration. Calvin, is there anything you wanted to say about these?
No, ma'am, we checked them all.
All agencies have signed off.
Who needs to be removed? Who needs to be removed?
There was one change of ownership on one of them.
I just need to know the one, let's get rid of them tomorrow. I need to know the one to take off my list.
Okay.
All locations have been checked out.
All right. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution to approve the alcohol burn license for the calendar year of 2015.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Bryant, seconded by Barnes, that we approve the application or the alcohol license list for 2016. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
And opposes, the same sign? No opposers, motion carries. Thank you. Behind tab number four is a resolution authorizing the police car purchase. We had talked about this already, had approved it, and this is just a formal resolution for it to be done. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we did, that we accept this resolution.
Purchase.
Purchase three police cars for $25,000 each, which is a bargain.
Okay.
A second.
All right, motion by Bryant, seconded by Collins, that we adopt the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Opposes, the same sign? No opposers, and the motion carries. Thank you. Now, behind tab number five is a resolution authorizing the renaming of the Griffin Line Park. From the Louise B. Matthews Foundation, $25,000 was received to redo that part or to do that part, put playground equipment and whatever we deem necessary over there. And we thank the foundation for considering us with that. And everybody knows that Ms. Matthews was one of the wives of John Fletcher Low. And the J. Fletcher Low Foundation and the Louise B. Matthews Foundation has done a lot for parks throughout the city.
Yes, sir.
And we thank them for that. Mr. W. L. Brown is the one that administers that to us. I'll entertain a motion for the renaming of the park at this time.
Before you start, does the Griffin Line community know about this and approved it?
Yes, yes, I called Robert Thomas, we call him Boo. I called him and talked to them about that, and they are okay. They are the ones who requested that we do this for the park. And when the stipulation came, then we asked about that, and they're good.
If they're good with them, good.
They're good with it, okay.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we accept the resolution to designate the Louise B. Matthews Park as stated here.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion by Lane, seconded by Alonzo, I mean Allen. I almost said it too. That we adopt the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. And opposes, same sign? No opposers, and the motion carries.
And just make the $25,000 knowledge for the development of a park and a playground on Vine Street.
That's right, that's right. Behind tab number six is DDA appointment. We have an application that came from Mrs. Constance Rainey about, again, being appointed to serve on the DDA Main Street Board. And she's replacing, well, it was one of the vacancies. And we do have one more vacancy that we announced about that. But Mrs. Rainey expressed an interest in serving, and I think everybody, everybody knows her. I'll entertain a motion?
I move we accept this resolution.
I accept it, ma'am.
Okay. Motion by Collins, seconded by Lane, that we appoint Ms. Rainey to the DDA Main Street Board. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
And Mayor, why you talking about this?
Let me finish, let me finish carrying the motion first. Okay, no opposers, so the motion carries. All right, now, now, okay.
I say, you know, may make an announcement to the public. If anybody's interested in serving on the DDA Board, to please fill out applications, submit it down here to the city council.
Right, we do have one more vacancy.
We'll make another choice in December.
Okay. All right. Behind tab number seven, this is something that we had discussed. We really discussed last month, but we're taking formal action on it now. I think we discussed it for a budgetary item when we were working with the budget last, last month. This is a resolution regarding a pay scale amendment. And what it is, change the laborers for their pay grade to begin at 7-4. And the entry level for all patrol officers to be pay grade 14.5. But now, it was clarified on Tuesday night, that's entry levels after certification, is that right?
After completion of the certification.
After completion of the certification. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution. A second.
Okay, motion by Bryant, seconded by Collins, that we adopt the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Opposes, same sign? No opposers, and the motion carries. Okay? And the last item is for the demo of the old jail. And it was discussed quite considerably on the, doing something about our old jail, who is, which is a picture of slum and blight right now. And it was our intention that we needed to declare it as surplus at this point. And the resolution is for just that, to declare the old jail as surplus property. I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion, Mayor, that we accept the resolution authorizing the old jail to be surplus city property.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion by Lane, seconded by Barnes, that we declare the old jail house surplus property. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Opposes, the same sign?
And didn't we also, oh, excuse me?
And no opposers, so the motion carries.
And didn't we also say we wanted to at least go on and get rid of those dangerous things that are falling on us?
Right.
Well, they have?
And the intention is, later on, when all of the necessary paperwork and all of that is filed, is to demolish. And so, but there are some things that we have to do with EPD first. And so we'll proceed with doing that. All right, anything else about that discussion? Now, before we go into committee reports, I do want to acknowledge the president, I don't think he was in here at the very beginning, of councilman-elect LaMario Brown, who came tonight. He's sitting in observing, in observing status tonight.
And learning.
And learning, yeah. And he's going to some other meetings too. Thank you for doing that. All right, report from departments. Alonzo, since you had...
I'm about to have somebody read.
Yeah, I was about to say, since you had surgery on your eyes, if I could take the liberty to ask Ms. Bryant to do it for you one more time?
I really do, thank you.
Oh, well, Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Public Safety, for the month of November, for services in October. Light Department, one burning building fire, one cooking fire, one brush fire, 22 medical assist EMS, one vehicle smoking, three gas spills, one electrical wiring problem, one tower line down, four vehicle accidents, two smoke removals, three public service assistants, one lockout vehicle, one false alarm, three fire alarm activation, no fire. Training, pistol training, 60 hours, firefighter, 148 hours, driver training, 18 hours, ground ladder, 10 hours, fire behavior, 6 hours, search and rescue, 6 hours, confrontation, 4. Total hours of training is 152. Activities for the fire department, fire safety class, career day, fire drill, fire safety class, casual house daycare, Hunt Elementary, Fort Valley Middle School, Center for the Little Head Start, fire drill, fire drill, fire drill at Hunt Elementary, fire drill at Fort Valley Middle School, Inspector, payroll, South Command, Boot Market, U.S. Navy, Valley Athletic, Wellston Garden, Wellcrown, Sunset Finance. Police side.
Before you go to the police side, for months, you've heard me respond when they read this report, and it said cooking fire. You've heard me respond and say it wasn't at my house. Well, this time it was at my house, but not at the one I live in.
Or was that what caused the fire?
Yeah. Careful what you say. All right.
On the police side, we had one aggravated assault, 11 batteries, 29 thefts, two vehicle thefts. Total calls for service was 8,587. Calls for service reacted, 1,683. Incident reports filed, 470. Incidents reported, filed four hundred and seventy, warrants, ten. Tickets issued, one sixty. Traffic accident, traffic, drug arrest, six, custodial arrest, twenty-nine, eight to motorists, fifteen. Alarm calls, ninety-two. Escorts, sixty-one. Prison escort, escort, sixteen. Funeral escorts, ten. Suspicious person, fifty-six. Total training hours was one forty-eight, one fifty-six, one hundred and fifty-six traffic stops, eleven juvenile problems. Two house watch requests, security checks, five hundred and forty-three. Unsecured doors found, seven. Welfare checks performed, thirteen. Animal control calls, fifty-one. Nine-one-one error calls, thirty-four. And Chief, you want to add something?
Yes, ma'am. Um, on the fire side, Miss, Miss, Madam Mayor made a comment about the cooking fire. One thing that happens in cooking fires with grease fires, a lot of times try to put water on the grease fire. Water doesn't do anything but accelerate grease fire. So, we recommend to keep you a nice little thing of baking soda next to your stove, and you can use that in a pinch, but the first thing you want to remember is try to turn the oven or the stove off as fast as you can. On the police side, very happy to report, we had a great homecoming, arrested a minimal number of people for the normal disorderly conducts and public drunkenness. The parade went off without a hitch, and we didn't have any problems. So, that was a great credit to the guys that worked, and we really appreciate how hard they worked. The fire department and the police guys worked all weekend tirelessly, so we appreciate them for that. Thank you.
And we thank them, too.
There you go.
All right. Jimmy?
Okay. Public Works, from the administrative office. Usually, we average eight, nine, ten thousand dollars. This time, we have fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars we brought in this month. But, don't read anything into that, we were able to sell one of our surplus garbage trucks for forty thousand, so we, that really helps out. In other words, we have turned it around now to where we don't have just junk out there, and we're selling decent equipment, and we're using decent equipment, and hopefully, we can get on a really good schedule, and that's what we're doing with the police cars as well. So, I'm real, real happy about the way we're turning this around out there. And don't think that Jackie hadn't been busy. Over six hundred and fifteen calls have come into Public Works, which is an average. That's two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and thirty calls a week that you either redirect, or you write work orders, et cetera. So, they stay busy, I promise you. But I was real pleased, so when you take that fifty-four thousand that we added, plus what we collected on our routine, what our utility department picks up, picks up for garbage fees, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. If we had a year of months like that, we'd be doing really well, I promise you. Well, for the fleet maintenance, for the public safety, we did one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents worth of savings, working on the public works and public safety divisions, and we did a hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents on Ms. Martha's car, saved her a little bit of money there, too. Okay. Sanitation report. We just got the street sweeper back, and I hope you've seen it up and running. So, basically, we don't have any streets for the month of October, but they started right at the end of October, before we got it. So, it's back up and running and doing well. We hauled nine hundred and twenty-eight tons of MSW, which is household garbage, to the landfill, which is, I'm gonna say, average for about this time of year. No tons, no, we didn't deliver any C and D, because we didn't take down any houses. But we did deliver ten loads of waste and, of yard waste to the pine woods out in Ideal, Georgia. Okay? The street supervisors, if you notice, we've been patching potholes throughout the city. They've been doing a real good job, and when they're not doing that, they're picking up limbs and debris, cutting right aways, et cetera. They also participated in Fort Valley Homecoming Parade. My hat's off to Public Works for their participation in the homecoming. They kept everything looking clean. When everything, everybody was gone, so was the trash, and that's nice. We're real proud of that, very proud. Park supervisors spent a lot of time trying to get the festival park in shape, doing that, just getting the city cleaned up, and they're doing their particular parts. Cemetery, cemeteries are both looking good. I'm real, real pleased. Of course, the grass isn't growing as much this time of year, but it gives them a chance to edge, keep up, get all the, all the mowers and everything. We're rebuilding those as we go for the next growing season. So, we're doing a steadily good job out there. Stormwater, there's a lot here on the stormwater, but basically, we're working to finish up with the retention pond. We're still, they're still going through and cleaning outlets that we've already done, so we haven't done much mapping in the month of October, but I can promise you, we're gonna finish up this mapping and get it part and salute for completed as built for the city. It's gonna be a plus, I guarantee you. And with that, just a good job, they did great with the Christmas decorations. It's just accolades to the entire department. My, my hat's off. That's it.
Thank you.
Uh, have we put out the bids for the, you know, we will have to rebid the...
For the, for the sprinkler?
Not sprinkler.
Fountain?
Fountain.
The fountain, that's, that's still in Carter and Slute's hands.
Oh, they do.
Right. They had finished up to get that. Is that correct, Larry?
Got it.
We're good?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The administrative department. Uh, city complaints, we had four inoperative vehicles, six overgrown vacant lots, no houses scheduled for demo this time, houses scheduled for court was five, no closed businesses. We do had application approved for one and an application pending for another. Community service workers' hours were three hundred hours, no health department complaints.
Thank you.
Good.
Economic development.
I don't have anything to add to, unless any of y'all know if anything we weren't able to meet this month.
The phone is ringing off the, off the hook, though. Because of the, um, the infrastructure improvement and the street improvement, phone is ringing off the hook, so we expect to have something soon.
Something to talk about.
Yeah, something to talk about, something.
There you go.
All right. There, finance.
Okay. Finance, y'all have got your cash comparison statements, and Duke suggested, and I thought it was a good idea, I asked Brian if he would do it next year, because he's the one that has, you know, the bank statements, and his will be neater than this, but it won't be more accurate, okay? But he'll have, his will be typed in, and we can keep account of. We're always sort of a month behind, because this is the bank statements from the end of October, even though, I mean, even though this is now November. The, uh, the Captel Outlay has gone up, and you see that, it's been twenty-five, 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 and it's to forty now, because of the police vehicles, I think it was, that were sold. And I was just wondering, Martha, should, should the truck that was sold from Public Works be put in Captel Outlay, or...
You all said y'all wanted to go back in.
Into Public Works, okay.
Sanitation, so that's why I put it.
Okay, that's fine. So, this forty includes the police vehicles that were sold, and the general fund has gone up, part of that is because of the, you know, we get the insurance check, and that was, that's one reason. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, but the insurance check was more this year, we budgeted more. We budgeted, I think it was five fifty, and yet, the check was five sixty-five, but we just get that one, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four, but we only get that once a year. But does anybody have any questions about the cash accounts? Okay. Now, here's one other form that is very neat, I've been doing it by pencil, and Martha did it, you see how neat it is? It shows how much has come in on our splosh now. I've got a question, Martha.
I was gonna tell you Brian did that, Martha wouldn't have done it that neat.
But my question is, the Public Works has a star, and it says, if a piece of equipment for Public Works, it should be taken out of the Public Works column.
That's, that's for him to keep it straight about, because you have Public Works, and then you have Streets, and you have Streets and Stormwater, and then you have...
And so, that's all public.
Yeah, that's for him to keep it, keep it straight.
Okay. All right. Now, do y'all see what this is? Now, this shows at the top, the beginning balance. This is the new splosh that starts in two thousand and fifteen, but this is what we hope we will get, six fifty-one, well, eight oh two for Stormwater, but we've got some left over from eighth, which we really need, all of that, because of the pond that's gotta be paid for and so forth. But this, y'all, y'all see this? This is very neat. These are what every different entity will be getting, hopefully, until two thousand and twenty-one. So, eight oh two is Streets and Stormwater, but mainly Stormwater. Six fifty-one is Public Works, five hundred is Buildings, we haven't spent any of that. In Public Works, we have spent about thirty-nine thousand. Solid Waste, we've spent sixty-two. Parks and Recreation, now we just spent fifty on the new bathrooms out at the festival park, and also, the eight thousand is for the bandstand, I believe, right? Okay. And, but if we will get this every month, then you don't need my, you know, ends and ends, but like, the chief was interested in, in what percentages everybody is spending, and you can figure, now, Public Works, Solid Waste, and Parks and Recreation all have about ninety, one has ninety-four percent left, others have around ninety. Public Buildings has a hundred percent left, and Public Safety has a hundred percent left. But to take money out of sploshing, just take a council agreement, and that's what we voted on this today, on those police calls, but that was from the old eight splosh. Now, you'll have to start using from the fifteen splosh. Are there any questions about this?
The two thousand fifteen, year three, one hundred?
It's a twenty-one, it's six years, and so, we don't, there's two things we have to be sure of, that we've got the money, and then that no different entity goes over that percentage. Any questions about this? Yeah, two fifteen to two thirty, that's right. All right. So, that's our splosh, and we, Martha will give us this every month, too, so these will be very neat. But as I say, no more accurate than mine, just neat, okay? All right. Now, the budget, we've only gone one month in this new year, because our fiscal year starts October the first, and so, we should have used eight point eighty-three percent and gotten eight point, eight point thirty-three percent of the total years. Now, our revenues are higher, they're eighteen percent, and that's primarily because of that big insurance check. Everything else is pretty close. The biggest one is twelve percent, shouldn't be over eight percent, and remember, we did have a goal. Now, this doesn't have anything to do with the monthly percentage, but we have a goal of every line item at the end of the year being seven percent less, because we did budget a deficit, and if every line item by the end of the year is seven percent less, which this year, we came down, we had a deficit, but it's not as big a deficit as we thought it was gonna be. Are there any questions about any of this?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Thank you. You finished? Okay. Thank you. All right. One news, personnel?
I have it.
You don't have a personnel report? Okay. Thank you so much for your reports. Things are starting out looking good. You will allow me to have a probably, a state of the, state of the city report real soon, and maybe the first of the year. I do want to say, because the Griffin Line Mayor and his staff, me and, came in a little bit late, late after we took the action on the, on the park, there was twenty-five thousand dollars that was donated by the Louise, Louise B. Matthews Foundation to do what was requested for that park. Y'all asked about something being done there, and you will see some work being started on that sometime real soon. And I know you, you're living in the area, so I know you're gonna help supervise that work, and I don't think Mr., I don't think Mr. Brown has a problem with that at all. We hope by the time it's completed, the children will have a place that they can go and play and be proud. They will not have to go all the way over to Festival Park to use the playground equipment. They will not have to go all, all the way over to South Peach Park to play soccer and those kinds of things. So, hopefully, that's gonna be the case. All right?
We appreciate that, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, about what we have to do in order to get this grant money, if they want to change the name of the park, from what we already have, one, two of our, two of our citizens who were born and lived right down that lot where the park is at now, they, and one of them died in Vietnam, and the other one served in the Navy, but he died later on. It wasn't, it wasn't in no action. And we dedicated that park, that park to them, as we cleaned it up and had everything cleaned up down there, and had it dedicated, and you still want to change the name to it before we get the money?
Well...
Or do we, do all the other parks have to have, all have to give up something like that to get grant money?
Well, for the festival park, we did dedicate that to Low, John Fletcher Low, for the Fles- Festival Park, where we named it Fort Valley Festival Park. On the Vineville Park, we named it, we renamed it after the person that gave the money. We have done that with all the parks in the city. As far as the dedication of the ones who were, who served in the military, I'm sure that that can be a plate dedicating some portion of that to that, to that person. You know, when you go to historic markers, that's what you see. You see the plate that's dedicated to that person that gave his life. That's, that's a part of history, and I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem with that. Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Like we did over here, where we just dedicate the play area, playground area?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be possible for us to leave the name like it is and just dedicate the playground area under Louis B. Matthews?
Louise B. Matthews.
Uh-huh. And that way, with that, please, y'all, just, just the playground with the equipment, where the playground equipment is put, what name is her name back now?
Louise B. Matthews.
But the name of the park itself remains the same.
The whole park be what it was.
The park can be whoever they...
So, if you're saying the sign is still be out front where y'all park like that?
What I'm saying, I'm asking the mayor, if we can leave the name of the park, just like it is, but the playground area, where the equipment will be, playground...
Where you gonna spend the money that was given?
Be named after this lady, yes.
That'll work.
That'll work.
Now, okay, as, as the president of the Keepers Night and Gender Organization, I want to ask this. If, if you do it that way with the, the entire park being changed, no, let me finish. That whole park, that entire park still remain the same, not under the same name, but it can be on a different name, right? Portion of it going to be this person, and the other portion will still be for the, for our citizens?
The name, the name of the park will remain the same, no changes. Only name that will be added will be where the playground equipment is.
Is it already been added, ma'am?
No.
We haven't even started working on it.
And we will have, when we finish putting everything out there, we will have what we call a celebration, maybe during your Griffin Line Day, I don't know when your Griffin Line Day is, but with all the equipment and everything that's being put in, we dedicate... But with all the, uh, equipment and everything that's being put in, we dedicate now. I do want to say that, uh, these questions are coming up, but I did call Mr. Thomas and talked to him about it. And, uh, and he said, I mean, he said it was okay. So now y'all-
I didn't say it was okay.
You didn't say it was okay.
No, I, I didn't even know definite answer about that, but he told me to get back with you before this meeting, which I didn't get a chance to do. And, uh, but, I did talk with you about it.
We did talk about it, right, right.
But you come and talk about it and explain things to me about it. That's why I started walking the community and finding out how, how they feel about, uh, you know, the change of the park.
Okay, I, I don't want it to sound like that your mayor is lying. We talked about it. I don't want it to sound like your mayor is lying. And I don't want the public to think that your mayor is lying. Now, if you think we need to take the twenty-five thousand back and don't do it, then we won't, we won't have any funds to do an improvement on that park yet.
I think what he's saying, he didn't make a definite decision on.
I can speak for myself.
I understand that, I understand that.
Now, uh, what we're saying is that if we have to sell out everything that we worked for now and now, uh, for that twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, it, it, it just don't seem like-
I didn't say anything about selling out anything. What you put down there is still there, it's gonna still be there. We didn't say anything about selling out anything. We ain't gonna dig up nothing and move nothing. We're not gonna do that. We are enhancing, uh, on that park like we've been doing on other parks. We are adding to.
Yeah. Well, let me ask, do you know the grant that you get without a name going with it?
Not without a match. Now, we looked at, uh, we looked at monies before we did that and, and we didn't have the matching funds to go in with it. You, you know, grants comes, sometimes, everybody think grants are free money.
Right.
But most times it's not. And we didn't have to put in a budget, any matching funds with that. So I went to Mr. Brown to find out if we could get some money from that foundation. Now, if you think that was a mistake, I won't ask for anything else, if we, if it's gonna be an issue with it.
Let me try and explain it.
Okay.
I think sort of, I mean, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think what he's saying is, they have worked for several years.
I understand that.
And if we could keep the whole thing, the name of the guy who died in Vietnam.
I understand that.
And then put a plaque by the playground.
I think that's what Juanita was explaining.
That's what was explained. The name of the park is not gonna change.
Right.
Only thing we will do is put a little plaque up where the playground equipment is.
And you familiar, don't you?
The whole park will remain the same. But it's gonna just put a little plaque up there where the playground equipment is gonna be installed and we'll celebrate that. Now, that's okay.
What is the name of it? I, I-
John C. Preston Robert Thomas Jr. Memorial Park.
Say what now?
John C. Preston Robert Thomas Jr.
And one, one person died in Vietnam, right? And one person was suspended.
So all that's gonna remain the same, is what I'm saying, right?
The name is the same.
Should we take, or we're like, yeah, and yes.
Are we clear?
May I ask a question, ma'am?
You don't mind?
Um, could you repeat the resolution that you just made so they can hear?
Yeah, then they would hear.
Whereas the City of Fort Valley owns said property located at three oh-four Viana Street. Whereas said property has been dedicated for use as a neighborhood park. And whereas the Louis, Louise B. Matthews Foundation has made a substantial financial contribution toward the development of this park as well as other neighborhood, uh, park improvements, it is the desire of Mayor and Council that the park located at three, um, oh-four Viana Street be named in honor of late Louise B. Matthews. The city park located at three oh, uh, four Viana Street be hereby named the Louise B. Matthews Park.
I think to, to what we want to do, we'd have to amend the resolution.
Amend that resolution. And, do you want to do it now?
Yeah, uh, if you make the motion to amend the resolution.
Rescind.
Uh-huh, rescind, rescind this resolution and amend it to say something else. Say what you want it to say.
I make the motion to rescind the resolution that's printed and amend it to say that the name of Griffin Line Park remains the same.
You need to rescind one.
And then undo it again. I make a motion to rescind the, uh, resolution.
Okay, uh, motion by, um, Bryant and second by two, Collins and, uh, Alonzo Allen, to rescind the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word "aye." And the opposed is the same side? No opposers, the motion carries. All right, now go on with your next motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution to state-
Make a new resolution.
Resolution is gone now.
New resolution. To state that the park remains the same, I don't know all that long names. And we, we put a plaque there where the playground equipment will be in name of Louise B. Matthews. Louise B. Matthews.
Okay. Everybody understood what the, what the resolution will say? All right, all in favor of that, let it be known by the word "aye." Oh, somebody, who seconded?
Y'all agree with that, bro? Is that okay? Y'all, y'all agree with that? Just want to make sure.
All right, motion by Bryant, second by Collins, um, that, okay, all in favor, let it be known by the word "aye." And opposed is the same side? All right, motion carries.
How about the motion we are adjourned? You can't adjourn.
Motion by Collins, second by, by Bryant.